Padasuruna, el sayana gorei Hunna ta stala mulapai, nadipin tutunna bu Padasuruna, el sayana gorei Hunna ta stala mulapai, nadipin tutunna bu Nee na, santosha ganamun, raksarna sunggamun, mahashaygamun Nee na, santosha ganamun, raksarna sunggamun, mahashaygamun Dangamu yerugami, ne namandu, che mamu karuvai Unda ka, Jesus ne hipoda Pranam kethi ni prematu, anna gashinchina bu Dalgamu yerugami, sne namandu, che mamu karuvai Unda ka, Jesus ne hipoda Pranam kethi ni prematu, anna gashinchina bu Nidantaro, ningun sunnu, na paygi kalikaro Chodalalaina, badalainalu, edurintu ni prematu Nidantaro, ningun sunnu, na paygi kalikaro Chodalalaina, badalainalu, edurintu ni prematu Nee na, santosha ganamun, raksarna sunggamun, mahashaygamun Nee na, santosha ganamun, raksarna sunggamun, mahashaygamun Veer danna kalekina, deshamandu, veeku va velukai, nilatsinagu Dhinu vakkathode, abhi bhutni parasi, hai guttulu Simma sanamichinahu Veer danna kalekina, deshamandu, veeku va velukai, nilatsinagu Dhinu vakkathode, abhi bhutni parasi, hai guttulu Simma sanamichinahu Maradu, yannadu, nivichina darshanam Anudinam, anusannam, nito na jivitan Maradu, yannadu, nivichina darshanam Anudinam, anusannam, nito na jivitan Nee na, santosha ganamun, raksarna sunggamun, mahashaygamun Nee na, santosha ganamun, raksarna sunggamun, mahashaygamun Dipchibamaina, loyayantu, chivati pati bai, velasinabu Nimasanibamu, maihimasharina mugamimatutu, mahashaygamu gamachinabu Dipchibamaina, loyayantu, chivati pati bai, velasinabu Nimasanibamu, maihimasharina mugamimatutu, mahashaygamu gamachinabu Hallelujah, hallelujah, nive maharachubu Hosanna, hosanna, nive maharachubu Hallelujah, hallelujah, nive maharachubu Hosanna, hosanna, nive maharachubu Nee na, santosha ganamun, raksarna sunggamun, mahashaygamun Nee na, santosha ganamun, raksarna sunggamun, mahashaygamun Padasuruna, el sayana gorei Hunna ta stala mulapai, nadipin tutunna bu Padasuruna, el sayana gorei Hunna ta stala mulapai, nadipin tutunna bu Na na ne na, na na ne 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 na ne na Hallelujah Devu nikimaihmmakalugunuga
Ame
Ame Hallelujah Jaa gummyalugunepoetni Aa gopasneham
Ame
Devu nu manikichcha
Ame
Ame Hallelujah Sne hipoda Ani pilitsina devu du Avra ena onnanande, aayi yesu prabhu maathikani Na kumaruda, ani avra ena pilisarande, aa devu yesu prabhu maathikani Hallelujah Devu nikimaihmmakalugunuga Aa anite goppa devu nu manakaluguna Andri baitma namasari chenudu, began devu satthan chenama Hallelujah Devu nikimaihmmakalugunuga Mari sami mulu Mari Nenu pramato ahonin chenapodu, nero sumagastu badihenu Mari salavka nka, kari gunna rindu thakramdulu Mari Ah vestka time vesti vintikanchepi, adiganapodu Mari karnul lo vimmu, poka meeting lo, kalisamo Ah bas James ga adu channay, varu vinda chesnapodu Ah chala pramaga hatvega hatukoni Chala nanu premitcha var devu swatram First time, nenu chotam first time, kari nanay jostana jipparayna Hallelujah Ah preli shara vimmu nenjostana nananana, nenu pooda chodasara vimmu nan YouTube la na message lekun, jostana jippi, var chapadu jari devu swatram Marapu na parche mayaru, aaroz meeting lo adigan varni August fifteen, kari gunna da paska nadeke, yesu bhadan kari gunna Anjipparapu adigan, varla, pakaluna idanpuna So anyway, intu doramasnarka bati, marla rey pratri kainam pranam triki Pakal kari gunna vintili, pakal potam gora, chapman jippan, devu ekam korban bati I mood meetings manki, mari James ga yanto pramato manikicha, andri batisara, vaksari Chapadu vattu devu namaname Thank you sir, grace sir, my pleasure sir Mari, aikam, nire Englisha jappali Hallelujah Praise the Lord Mari Ah James vastga ni, mar pilisnapodu, varu kithilu raadu, varu kithilu, and English Tamil and English, okay, Tamil and English, rende vatsu, thilu raadu Mari alaga manam, ekada, amarikithirialen jippi, anapodu Nenu preli malisne, aadiganu, preli niri English lo paamartarathu, niri metru paamartaradu naru Aa kadi niri message, entire messaging kabati, niri translate chiyuska thani, adigan Adi paska nenu poodu chelidu, nenu ala chigalno, anadigan, adi jippar Ya naman, yebu chayepu, paravaidu, niri randi, apusarika virmu, devu vimmu hadpasara Ananapodu, inchuminsu, dakka dakka vaka namichchi, I'm not like the chesta Devu nikswatram Mari ekada, ekada message chappala, niri first time ganda Mari anjikal vastamano, vaka translate un devu manikichcha, chapadu vattu devu namaname Hallelujah Maliska varla, vattu devu namaname Pratikelu manu karamdu samandru, maraprathru, phalishtu Vattu devu namaname Hallelujah Abati, mari translation chedaniki, var maliska nputa phalishtu, madhiga, James ka ni Mari pokhiyato, sister, karuna, goddess sister Var savakastanada chitte, aame vastavasta, kadi plankla aagi, marli, kadi plankla, kadi plankla aagi, pokhisus vatsindi Ashistun devu divinsunugaga, var savakil gaurin chenama, varu thilusda nka, mari konrapu ni Ah joshuprazga, ah vachi Joshuprazga vachi, apokichi, paska ni, devu swatram Hallelujah Devu nikimaihmmakalugunuga Praise the Lord Alagi, mari, ah, translation chedanu chenepati, gundu chenepati, maliska ni, ana samiya nka nshi, pokichchi varanpura, madhiasar Praise the Lord, hallelujah Devu nikimaihmmakalugaga Ame Niri samiyo lo, yaka poodi, kathivini karen, aashilvarka nka jarkalanini, mari, mana sangbata garu Pachi prathaja sir, sada ru, yohanga, chalvai, yohanga ruchi, prathaja si, varu kishamena pokichsa nka vartana, hallelujah
Mahaprasidhila, prengal, tenri, no prabha, no dekha samen, no prabha, dhosri prabha, sanayi, no prabha, sanji, ma premitchi, prabha, samen, kadex, prabha Isai, prabha isai, jali ni raadakina, prabha, ni pooda raadakina, antakana, prabha, naina, nupet, wangal, tenri, aaya prabha Telugu, translate chedan, prabha, maliska nputa, prabha, jibas, kela, nupet, wangal, tenri, abadan, putta, pamka, orugun, prabha Naina, dhosri, prabha, lanta, aputa, vishe, kinchina, abadan, ebeda, mak, sangar, khavas, no prabha Apme yaha, niswotinsma, prabha, vachli, pet, langan, nupet, naina, nige, wangana, jali, nishkuntu, nige, mayhmmakanta, prabha, varli, pichkuntu, yesu, kalamalau Prathin, isamena, nukaska, apnus
Ame
Ame, hallelujah
Greetings to you all with a mighty, matchless, precious name of the Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ
Ame
Prabhu, ya, twenty, yesu, krista, nama, varna, nii antaki, vannarava, thile, yesu, ma
I bring you greetings from my family, from my wife Lydia
Iyaka, gopakna, vastutu, pracheyanka, na bariyata, nunchi, na kuduma, valkanu, chidhi, thile, yesu, ma
Lydia, my wife Lydia
Na bariya, Lydia
And from my little church, Abbotent Life Tabernacle Abbotent Life Tabernacle, paripurna
Na, chinnasangam, vellu, Abbotent, Tabernacle, chenchin, Abbotent Life, Abbotent Life And paripurna, ma ina, jivitan, jivom
John, ten, nine, ten, versus John
Yohan suvarta, vadu, ajayamut, tumelo, vuchan
Amen And I am really privileged to come into your midst
Na, gresen, ari, goppa, aadike, taindi, nii mati, vatsi, isuvarta, vakkanen, chenam
When I met Pastor Alicia for the first time last month in, ah, Karnul
Mottamadu, saariga, nenu Alicia ka ni, karnul, la, balasku, napodu
And first time I met brother Malish
Mottamadu, saariga, nenu malisra, varla, nenu, kalasku, nanam
Definitely we knew the Lord has united our hearts
Devu du, mumai, hoodiyali, eegon, chesir
So when he invited me, I have come very, very happily in your midst
Eppuray, na, Alicia ka, aammanichalu, nenu, mima, jaka, naavta, nki, ento, ento, santushpada
I don't feel I am a newcomer
Nenu, nenu, eegon, anupotli, nenu, kottaga, vatsi, vettin, anekariki
I feel I knew all of you long time back
Nenu, na, pumundu, gani, niri thilusu, niri, YouTube, da, nenu, vimmu, chusina
Not YouTube Because we have chosen the whole boundary of the world, your name, your name, your name, and my name was written in the South Book of Life
Ame Semen, senti, YouTube la, gatu, gora, pilla, chia, vellu, nalu, i, i, bo, vikapunadi, eegon, vallu, vimmu, nan, nenu, paravava, chusina
God bless you, my precious brothers and sisters
Devu, vimmu, nan, aasim, chenaga, na, priyamayana, sahodri, sahodri, gara
The invitation given to me
Iyavava, na, kichinanduku
The, ah, warm reception
Warm reception, te, goppa, aavva, naku, susvavatamu
And the welcome bouquet
Iy bouquet, na, aavva, kichinanduku
Is very much, very, very much above my expectation and my level
Nenu, thina, sile, poodu, vallu, vichvaka, na, bo, kanna, thidi
I appreciate it very much, Pastor Alicia, appreciate, and all the church members, they appreciate you all
Nenu, aadigan, vallu, thilu, yesu, nanu, i, paska, aayi, nitu, vallu, Alicia ka, nki, aayi, sangastu, laki
God bless you all once again
Mari, posari, nii, antana, devu, divichchaga
You may please be seated
Taitches, puchan
Hallelujah
Hallelujah
My mother tongue is English
Na, yaka, mathru, vasha, English
But from my childhood, I learned, I was brought up in Tamil surroundings
Na, yaka, chinnapadu, nichi, nenu, Tamil, na, pranthu, nalu, tagal, vashu, nalu, tagal, prajala, mati, nenu, perigun, na
And when I accepted the Lord Jesus Christ as my Savior and God at the age of twenty-two
Nenu, prabhu, ya, yesu, kristi, na, sota, rakshakal, aanki, kani, chindapu, na, vais, yere, vire, sumantara
I converted from Roman Catholic
Nenu, Roman Catholic, sangam, nandi, nenu, mari, na, na
My pastor was doing ministry in the villages, rural areas
Ma, pastor, gatu, devu, nenu, paricheli, ah, villages, lo, nenu, palidu, la, khas, na
And there we can only speak Tamil
Akka, nenu, keavu, Tamil, mathru, vallu, maakadavasi, vundu
So I started reading Tamil Bible, started praying in Tamil
Nenu, punnichi, Tamil Bible, family Bible, sada, vattu, madhala, vikkanu, Tamil, vallakadu, madhala, vikkanu
And when the time came, my pastor invited me to the pulpit, and I started preaching in Tamil
Voks, vabharav samya, vallu, ma, paska, na, aavva, kichalu, bali, vekan, vattaki, na, pressing, chenaki, tagal, vallu
For forty years, I was within the ministry, preaching, reading Bible, Tamil Bible, speaking Tamil, preaching in Tamil
Rattu, na, pe, samachchala, gaa, nenu, tagal, vallu, vistha, nalu, Tamil, prajala, vallu, vattu, nalu, Tamil, Bible, vallu, vutna, nalu
Three years back
Muri, sumantara, vikitan
I got an invitation from Pastor Samuel Boombaka, Hyderabad
Na, oka, aavva, vachitthi, Pastor Samuel Boombaka, Hyderabad, vattu, nunchi
To attend the camp meetings
Iyoka, camp meeting, aganavadi
There foreigners were invited to preach the word of God
Akka, etara, deshestu, na, devu, vakti, bodhichamani, aavva, kichalu
So I came to hear the preaching by the foreigners
Nenu, akka, venanu, devu, etara, deshestu, pressing, chetikani, venanu
But then the situation changed
Akka, paristu, vutna, mari, vaidi
Somehow, the meetings, the, 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 it was leaked out on Facebook, WhatsApp, and all that, and the RSS, and the, into, ah, into, ah, they raised objection, police came and stopped the foreigners from coming to the campground
Akka, nenu, pressing, chenapodu, ma, yaka, pressing, vallu, YouTube, channels, la, kani, WhatsApp, la, kani, Facebook, la, kani, vellu, vaidi Apnu, vallay, chenak, RSS, RSS, kani, hindu, vedhreka, group, vallu, vich, mamal, update, chesir, nenu, devu, vakti, pressing, chenak, vallu, vadi
It was a very difficult situation
Ali, chala, kastha, vallu, paristidi
Brother Samuel Boombaka was very much in difficult situation
Apnu, Samuel Boombaka, vallu, chala, kastha, vallu, unna
But the meeting was not stopped
Kani, akka, devu, vurikali, aai, vodai
He arranged the local pastors who came, each one to take one session
Akka, aayi, na, local, local, vallu, pastor, na, aavva, kichalu, varu, vich, rose, vallu, vich, pressing, chenak, madhala, vikkanu
Now that was the first time I met Samuel Boombaka and Francis Ambathuma
Aaroz, ma, akka, aayi, nenu, Samuel Boombaka, kani, karnul, vunna, twenty, Francis, kani, nenu, kala, vodai, jari
So they asked me to preach the word of God for the last session
Vallay, vadi, kaki, simple, vurikalu, viri, vallu, pressing, chenak, vallu, vadi, vallu, vadi, vadi
Now that was a difficult situation for me
Na, oka, aaroz, chala, kastha, vallu, paristidi
Forty years reading Tamil Bible, praying Tams, preaching in Tamil
Narapi, samachchala, vallu, nenu, Tamil Bible, vallu, vadi, tagal, vallu, vadi, pressing, chenak, tagal, vallu, vadi, prati, chenak
English my mother tongue, but I have not preached anywhere in English
Kani, English, na, mathru, vasha, aynapadi, nenu, English, vallu, vadi, vadi, vadi
I agreed, I said, okay
Nenu, pookanu
With the help of the Lord, I, I preached my first English sermon, three years back, in Camp Meeting, Hyderabad
Devu, vallu, dayavala, na, na, muri, sumantara, vikitan, nenu, mottamadu, saariga, English, vallu, pressing, chenak, madhala, vikkanu
And since then, God has been helping me, and with that confidence in God, I am standing before you
Aaroz, nichi, devu, na, sahain, aayi, madhala, vikkanu, devu, dayavala, aa, dayavala, i, ro, mimmundu, vichali, English, vallu, vadi, vadi
Praise the Lord Hallelujah God bless you all
Nenu, vallu, devu, divichchala
Today is a special day for our country, India
Iyro, bhaan, desham, vallu, chala, mukkiamayana, roju
The whole country is celebrating Independence Day
Ibar, desham, mottam, swattha, dilavsa, jaru, vuntu
It is our seventy-fifth independence
Idi, mana, depri, vallu, swattha, vino, so
Today we are remembering all our patriots, the, the country's patriots, who gave their lives for us to enjoy this freedom
Iyro, mana, chala, mandi, desha, vukto, vallu, vadi, chundam, ento, vanti, varu, pranale, lakka, chay, vunda, i, swattha, vallu, vadi, ento, kastha, vada Iyro, mana, vallu, vandam, vanti, aaroz, vallu, chesina, kaka, vallu
There was so much of loss
Chala, nastu, vay
There was property loss
Aas, thina, nastu, vadi, thidi
There was life's loss
Pranam, nastu, vadi, thidi
Many people went to jail
Chala, mandi, jail, vialu
Many people lost their families
Chala, mandi, tam, kudama, nastu, vialu
With only one, one purpose in mind
Var, manasno, vake, vaka, udyesu, vundi
That the forthcoming generations
Murabhotu, na, taram, kosan
Should not be under, under British bondage
Var, yank, rabhotu, na, taram, yata, maatr, voda, British, vallu, aadi, vallu, vodan, vayakai, udyesu, vodan, vallu, enta, kastha, vadi, ah, freedom, vadi, sir
Should be a liberated people
Liberated people Var, swattha, vallu, kosam, eh
Should be an independent people
Var, vikthi, katham, kosam, eh
So they gave their lives for that
Daani, kosam, vallu, pranal, lakshmi, vittal
Now that is when one country, one nation, is, ah, is having authority over another nation
Ekka, eegon, vallu, vedi, vare, deshestu, vallu, mana, desham, veda, adi, vallu, chalais, vallu, vadi
This independence is only for the body
Iy, i, swattha, vallu, vadi, keavu, i, serin, aayi
This independence is freedom from one people for another people
Iy, swattha, vallu, vadi, vaka, jaat, vallu, maatr, vadi
This, this independence for one nation from another nation
Iy, swattha, vallu, vadi, vaka, desha, vallu, vich, inko, desha, vadi, anta, British, vallu, vadi, 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 vadi
It is a great thing
Idi, chala, goppa, vishya
It is a big thing
Idi, chala, pata, vishya
We are really, we are happy for this Independence Day
Mana, vikkanu, vundi, aa, swattha, vallu, vadi, aavva, vandha, santushpada, i, swattha, vallu, vadi, vodai
We are celebrating and enjoying this Independence Day
Iy, i, akka, swattha, vallu, vadi, vallu, vadi, vadi, vadi
But there is another independence
Inka, inko, swattha, vadi, vikka
There is another freedom
Inka, vare, ah, swetch, vadi, vadi, vikka
There is another liberty
Mana, vadi, 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 vikka
Which has to be celebrated
Daani, vallu, jaru, vadi, vadi
The whole of that kind
Mana, jaat, vallu, vadi, vadi
In the Bukasam, this says, everyone have sinned and gone astray
Enta, granda, vadi, vadi, vadi
Everyone have sinned, sinned, and gone astray
Pratyavakal, paavum, chesi, devu, nenu, mayhmmakanta, vangala, vadi, vadi
Everyone have gone astray from God
Pratyavakal, devu, vadi, 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 paavum, vadi
Everyone have become a slave to sin
Pratyavakal, paavani, bani, saray, vadi
Everyone are in the bondage to sin
Pratyavakal, paavani, bani, saray, vadi
And Satan is, Satan is having authority over them
Sayidha, vallu, vadi, adi, vadi, chalais, vadi
So we need to be liberated from this bondage
Mana, vallu, kappan, saariga, iyaka, bhandakal, vich, vudhara, vadi, vadi
We need to get a, a deliverance from this bondage
Iyaka, iyaka, bhandakal, vich, vadi, vadi
We need to be liberated from sin and shame
Iyaka, paavani, vich, paavani, rimut, vich, vadi, vadi
When we were under bondage to the British Raj
Mana, vallu, British, vallu, vandhir, vadi, vandapodu
We enjoyed a lot of privileges
Mana, chala, aadikati, anuguvicham
There were a lot of good things they have given to us, to our people
Var, chala, manchis, vishal, vadi, vich, sam, manchi, sangadu, vadi, vadi
But we did not have the rights
Mana, vadi, eegon, vadi, vadi, swattha, vadi, vadi, ento, vadi, vadi, bani, saray, vadi, vadi
Because they were ruling us, they had the authority over us
Var, British, vallu, vadi, paripal, vadi, 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 vadi
Now after we are liberated from them
Var, vadi, 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 vadi
We have formed our own constitution
Mana, vadi, 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 vadi
We have elected our own rulers
Mana, vadi, 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 vadi
We have our own reforms
Mana, vadi, vadi, ah, reforms
Reforms
Vadi, 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 vadi
So that is because we have been liberated from the power of another people that were ruling over us
Idi, vadi, 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 vadi
Now when we are under bondage to sin
Eppuray, na, vadi, 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 vadi
We are under bondage to, to the devil
Mana, sayidha, vadi, 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 vadi
We lose our rights, we don't have our own thinking
Mana, vadi, 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 vadi
We cannot take our own decisions
Mana, vadi, 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 vadi
We cannot do things as we want, as we like
Mana, vadi, 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 vadi
We are under bondage
Mana, vadi, 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 vadi
We have to do as he tells us what to do
Mana, vadi, 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 vadi
Response was before we were the children of disobedience, before we were the children of disobedience
Var, vadi, 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 vadi
And we did not do as we wanted, but we did according to the lust of our flesh
Mana, vadi, 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 vadi
Amen Now we have to be liberated from this bondage of sin
Mana, vadi, 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 vadi
So we seen in Hebrews chapter two
Mana, vadi, 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 vadi
Verses five to fifteen
Vachinam, ayidun, vich, paayi, vadi, vadi Paayi, vadi, vadi, ayidun, vadi, vadi Runda, vadi, 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 vadi
Someone reading, natalu Okay, we'll save that
Mana, vadi, 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 vadi Aa, rabavu, lokamnu, aayi, dota, vadi, vadi, vadi Aite, vaka, vaka, chota, vadi, 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 vadi Ni, vadi, 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 vadi Ni, vadi, 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 vadi Ni, vadi, 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 vadi Mayimah, prabha, vadi, 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 vadi Ni, vadi, 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 vadi Vadi, 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 vadi Aayi, samastam, vadi, 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 vadi Vadi, 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 vadi Parishita, vadi, 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 vadi Inka, vadi, 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 vadi Devu, vadi, 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 vadi Mana, vadi, 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 vadi Takkoo, vadi, 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 vadi Yesu, mana, vadi, vadi, vadi Mayimah, prabha, vadi, vadi Keetam, vadi, 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 vadi Yavari, nimittamu, samastam, vadi, vadi Yavari, vallu, vadi, vadi Aayi, aane, vadi, 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 vadi Mayimah, vadi, vadi, vadi Vadi, vadi, vadi Samana, vadi, vadi, vadi Aayi, vadi, vadi Parishita, vadi, vadi, vadi Parishita, vadi, vadi, vadi Andari, vadi, vadi, vadi Ie, vadi, vadi, vadi Vadi, vadi, vadi Aayi, vadi, vadi Ni, vadi, vadi Na, sahodri, vadi Prashira, vadi Samajam, vadi Ni, keetni, vadi, vadi Mari, vadi, vadi, vadi Ani, vadi, vadi, vadi Devu, vadi, vadi, vadi Ani, vadi, vadi, vadi Aa, bati, aa, vadi, vadi Rakta, namasam, vadi, vadi Aa, prakal, vadi Mana, vadi, vadi, vadi Anaga, abhavadi, vadi Mana, vadi, vadi, vadi Jeevita, kalam, vadi Mana, vadi, vadi Daas, vadi, vadi, vadi Aayi, vadi, vadi
Ame, ame, hallelujah And deliver them who through fear of death, were all their lifetime subject to bondage Fifteen, versus fifteen
Aa, bati, aa, vadi, vadi, vadi If you have been forced to live. 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 If you have been forced to live.
Though we were children, forasmuch then as the children are partakers of flesh and blood, he also himself likewise took part of the same, that through death he might destroy him that had the power of death, that is the devil, and delivered them who through fear of death were all their lifetime subjected to bondage. We were under bondage and subject to the devil.
We will be free from this.
We will read from Romans five once again, it says, for unto angels hath he not put in subjection the world to come, which we speak of, the world to come, first words, the world to come, not this world, but the world to come.
We have heard about this.
We are waiting for that world to come.
We have heard about this.
We are children of that world.
We have heard about this.
But we are here in the flesh and blood.
We will suffer this.
But he has, he has not given angels, he has not put that world in subjection to angels.
The Lord Jesus Christ will take this.
That world is not for the angels, their angels are only to serve you and me.
The Lord Jesus Christ will take this. The Lord will take this.
That world is for you and me.
The Lord will take this.
We are the children of God.
We are the children of God.
But, in one place, David in Psalm eight, he says, what is man that thou art mindful of him, or the son of man that thou art, that thou visitest him? Thou madest him a little lower than angels, thou crownest him with glory and honor, and didst set him over the works of thy hand, verse six and seven.
So, we have been forced to live. You 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 have been forced to live.
The meaning of this is, what value give you, you give man?
If you have understood this, what is man?
In earlier days, people will come trading down the street, they will bring chili or tamarind or something, he will give in exchange, you give them something, they will give you something.
If you have been forced to live. 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 If you have been forced to live.
Am I right? In very early days, it was only exchange of goods, no money.
If you have been forced to live. If you have been forced to live. If you have been forced to live.
What would you give for, in exchange for man? What would you give?
What would you give?
He says, thou madest him a little lower than angels.
He has been forced to live.
Angels are a higher level.
He has been forced to live.
But he made man lower level than angels.
He has been forced to live.
But in the end, he crowned him with glory.
But he has been forced to live.
With glory and honor.
He has been forced to live.
And set him as an authority over the works of thy hands.
If you have been forced to live.
This is what God has in purpose for you and me.
What is the purpose of this?
Thou hast put all things in subjection under his feet.
He has been forced to live.
Now, he is saying, when he says, for in that he put all in subjection under him, he left nothing that is not put under him.
He has been forced to live. He has been forced to live.
If you are a child of God.
If you have been forced to live.
If you are a son of God or daughter of God.
If you have been forced to live.
If you are four or eight of God.
If you have been forced to live.
If you are predestinated to eternal life.
If you have been forced to live.
If your name has been written in the last book of life.
If you have been forced to live.
Then this verse is for you and me.
If you have been forced to live.
But he is saying.
If you have been forced to live.
When he said, nothing is left of, there is nothing that has been left out.
If you have been forced to live.
God has given everything to his children.
If you have been forced to live.
He has not withheld any little thing for himself.
If you have been forced to live. If you have been forced to live.
But now, we see, we not yet all things are put under him.
If you have been forced to live.
Now, now. It was, the last, it was last line, but now we say, not yet all things put under him.
If you have been forced to live. 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 If you have been forced to live.
Eight words, okay, now he is saying, because not all things are yet put under him, because we are under the bondage of sin.
If you have been forced to live. If you have been forced to live.
We are children of God.
We will be free from this.
In one John three, one, he says.
If you have been forced to live.
One John, sorry, one John.
One John.
Three, verse one and two.
One John.
Behold, what manner of love the Father hath bestowed upon us, that we should be called the sons of God; therefore the world knows us not, because it knew him not. Beloved, now we are the sons of God, and it does not yet appear what we shall be; but we know that, when he shall appear, we shall be like him, for we shall see him as he is. Please, one John, third chapter, one and two.
If you have been forced to live. 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 If you have been forced to live.
Amen, we are now the sons and daughters of God.
If you have been forced to live.
But, we are still in the flesh and blood.
If you have been forced to live. If you have been forced to live.
This flesh and blood is under bondage of sin.
If you have been forced to live.
That is why Hebrews two fourteen, we will read, forasmuch then as the children are partakers of flesh and blood, he also himself likewise took part of the same, that through death he might destroy him that had the power of death, that is the devil.
If you have been forced to live. If you have been forced to live. If you have been forced to live. If you have been forced to live.
And deliver them who through fear of death, all their lifetime subjected to bondage.
If you have been forced to live. If you have been forced to live.
We are waiting for the deliverance.
If you have been forced to live.
We are waiting for that independence.
If you have been forced to live.
We are waiting for that liberty to be liberated.
If you have been forced to live. If you have been forced to live.
My beloved brothers and sisters.
If you have been forced to live.
This is the purpose that God himself came down in flesh and blood.
If you have understood this, the Lord will take this.
For deliver you and me.
If you have been forced to live.
From what? From what? From the fear of death which had as life long in bondage.
If you have been forced to live. If you have been forced to live.
If God has set you free.
If you have been forced to live.
If you have been made free by the gospel of the Lord Jesus Christ.
If you have been forced to live.
You are no more afraid of death.
If you have been forced to live.
And you are no more afraid of him that had the power over death, the devil.
If you have been forced to live. If you have been forced to live.
India has been liberated from the British Raj.
If you have been forced to live.
We have driven them away from our land, from our sand.
If you have been forced to live.
Now, if they will again come and try to make, put authority over you and me, what will we do?
If you have been forced to live.
Please tell them, sir, please go away.
If you have been forced to live.
You have no more authority over me.
If you have been forced to live.
I have been delivered from your powers.
If you have been forced to live.
I have been set free from your authority.
If you have been forced to live.
If God has set you free, my beloved brother and sister.
If you have been forced to live.
And the devil comes and tries to tell you, to exercise authority over you.
If you have been forced to live. If you have been forced to live.
He will give you all sorts of fears.
If you have been forced to live.
He will bring sickness and disease in your, in your life.
If you have been forced to live.
He will, he will take away the peace from your family.
If you have been forced to live.
He will bring fights and disputes between husband and wife, children and parents.
If you have been forced to live.
He will bring hunger into the family.
If you have been forced to live.
He will, you will be liking all good things, liking wanting good things. Like good things.
If you have been forced to live.
You will like, like good things, you will not have good things.
If you have been forced to live.
And he will put fear over you.
If you have been forced to live.
And what should you do?
If you have been forced to live.
What should you do? Devil, you have no power, authority over me.
If you have been forced to live. If you have been forced to live.
My Lord Jesus Christ, I am delivered by the cross of Calvary.
If you have been forced to live.
He died that I might live.
If you have been forced to live.
He has forgiven me all my sins.
If you have been forced to live.
And he has broken all your chains of bondage.
If you have been forced to live.
I am no more slave to you.
If you have been forced to live.
Take your sins and go away.
If you have been forced to live.
Take your sickness and go away.
If you have been forced to live.
Take all the difficulties away from my family.
If you have been forced to live.
I am a delivered person.
If you have been forced to live.
I have set free.
If you have been forced to live.
I am living in the liberty that Christ has gained for me.
If you have been forced to live.
This is the independence that we need to celebrate today.
If you have been forced to live.
This is the liberty we need to be rejoicing about.
If you have been forced to live.
We have to praise God for this.
If you have been forced to live.
We have to thank God for setting his only begotten son to die in yours place and my place.
If you have been forced to live. If you have been forced to live. If you have been forced to live.
We have to thank God for the, for the, for the love of God that was sacrificed and shed his blood for you and me.
If you have been forced to live. If you have been forced to live.
Now, in John, he says, well, the spirit of the Lord is, there is liberty.
If you have been forced to live.
Amen. If the spirit of God is in you, there is liberty.
If you have been forced to live.
If the spirit of God is in your family, there is liberty.
If you have been forced to live.
In whatever situation you are, if the spirit of God is with you, there is liberty.
If you have been forced to live.
Oh, where the spirit of the Lord is, there is liberty.
If you have been forced to live.
Are you liberated from sin, when we are present in this?
If you have been forced to live.
Have you been, has the, the, the bondage of, the devil has been broken, the chains have been broken?
If you have been forced to live.
Can you tell the devil, he has no more authority over you?
If you have been forced to live.
Salute the three, chapter, Galatians, chapter five, Galatians, chapter five.
Galatians.
Verse one. Five.
If you have been forced to live.
One.
If you have been forced to live. If you have been forced to live. If you have been forced to live. Now, if you have been forced to live.
Saint Paul is telling us here.
If you have been set free by Christ.
If you have been forced to live. If the spirit of the Lord has liberated you.
If you have been forced to live.
Stand fast in that liberty.
If you have been forced to live.
Wherever Christ hath made us free.
If you have been forced to live.
And be not entangled again with the yoke of bondage.
If you have been forced to live.
Yes, do not get entangled.
If you have been forced to live.
If Christ has liberated you, set you free.
If you have been forced to live.
And you really want to be free.
If you have been forced to live.
You enjoy that liberty.
If you have been forced to live.
You are rejoicing in that freedom.
If you have been forced to live.
Do not go and get entangled again.
नीकु भई, आ, पापुमने काडिकिन्दा, वेला वधु, आतु चिकुकोलु वधु।
When you know that there is a net has been thrown.
एप्रेक्त, आ, वेटकाड़ियो एन्ना आस्तारु, वालु विसिर्कारु।
And we know that they will throw some grains, food grains under that, so that the birds will come and pick at the food.
एप्रेक्त, आ, वेटकाड़ा वालु विसिरी, ताइ गिन्दा आस्तारु, कुन्ने गिन्दा आस्तारु। आ, पक्षियो यास्ते, तेलिपुलु वच्चि, आ, गिन्दारु बोस्तम, आ, इत्तकालु वच्चि, आ, वालु चिकुको भागे।
If the bird only looks at that food grain, it will come and sit there and start picking, but it tries to fly, it gets caught in the net.
आ, पक्षियो, आकाशलु लेगिरु पक्षियो लेजोस्ते, केयावलु वेत्रालु मात्रणाजोस्ते, आ, वालु नाकी जोड़ु, अनि, आ, वेत्रालु बोस्तम वच्चि, वेत्रालु तित्ता तित्ता, तित्तम आइप्पन्ना, लेस चेल्लामु तेलिकिन्ना आस्तारु, वालु बेटिरु पुट्मुनु।
That is only getting entangled, so do not entangle, do not, be not entangled again. Once you are in bondage.
मीलु इत्तकुन्ने एन्ने चैरु, बंदिरियो वालु नापु, प्रभु एर्यामु एसु कृष्टु मीमुल विडिपिच्छाडु, मरणानि, मीलु, पापुमने काडिकिन्दा, चिकुकोलु वधु, अनि पाउल्लार सर।
Do not go back to the same old dirty, filthy, sinful life.
मीलु, मीएक गत जीवितमु, गत प्रपण्चो, गत स्नेहुलु तो, मल्ला निन्ने यलावधु, इत्तकर्ते, इत्तकर्ते, देवु मीमुल विडिपिच्छाडु काबट्टी।
Christ has delivered you through the precious blood.
देवुली एर्यामु प्रभु एर्यामु एसु कृष्टु, तनारु स्वरक्तमु चैर्ता, मीमुल विडिपिच्छाडु।
He has given the most highest cost to deliver you from your sins.
निन्नो, तनारु स्वरक्तमु चैर्ता, निन्ने विडिपिच्छाडु, यंतो कच्चिबेट्टी, यंतो विलुवयन रक्तमु, विलुवयन रक्तमु निविडिपिच्छाडु।
Nothing else could compensate that.
आ, रक्तानिकी, ईलोकमु एन्नु गोड़ गला कटायुनु।
Because God himself has decreed, without the shedding of blood, there is no remission of sins.
देवुली तेलसु, इत्तकर्ते, रक्तमु चिन्दिच्छरुन्ना, पापक शमापन कलुगधु।
So to deliver a soul from sin, blood has to be shed, that is the highest order.
ये एत्ते चिरपापन चिन्दा विडिपिस्सारुका, रक्तमु चिन्दिच्छावासिवुन्ने, अदे अन्नीकर्ना गोप्पा विषयमु, रक्तु चिन्दिच्छामे।
So to save you, to deliver you, to set you free, God did not send someone, a second person, third person from the Trinity, to come and die for you. He himself, in Hebrews, second chapter, verse fourteen, we saw, he himself came in flesh and blood.
देवुडु, निन्ने विडिपिच्चितारु, मी इपु जाम जप्तारु काला, प्रित्तोलु उकुरुनालु, रिन्ना बेटिमाइन्पिच्छे, विडिपिच्छारुने काला अकाना। देवुले ससरीलु लुपक्तिक्षमायुन, अन्ते देवु, रक्तमामसमलु तनारु सेरिनत्तो अमच्चिकोनि, नीकोस्तमु, नाकोस्तमु, रक्तानी चिन्दिच्छे, तनारु मूल्यमाना रक्तानी चिन्दिच्छे, निन्ने विडिपिच्छन्।
Because he saw you as the son of God and the daughter of God, as children of God.
इत्तकर्ते, देवु निन्नो, तनारु कुमारुनिका, तनारु कुमार्तिका, देवुली पिलालु आयन चूस्युनारु।
God cannot die, God is the spirit, he cannot die.
देवु चाहिप्पाडु, इत्तकर्ते, देवु आत्म काबट्टी।
But he had to shed blood.
कान्य रक्तमु चिन्दिच्छावासिवुन्ने।
So he took the form of man.
आयन एका मानव सेरिनक दाच्छाडु।
For as children of flesh and blood, he himself also came in flesh and blood.
इत्तकर्ते, आयन पिलालु यलावनालु, रक्तमामसमलु यलावाहिका, उन्नार काबट्टी, आयन वोड़ रक्तमामसमलु तनारु सेरिनानु समा, अमच्चिकोनि, मनमचिको वच्चि, रक्तु चिन्दिच्छे, मन विडिपिच्छाडु।
So the prophet says, that blood, the life in that blood was the life of God.
मन प्रभुत्त बियम प्रणामुलाई उत्तरान्ते, रक्तमुलु जियोमुन्ने।
And there's only one form of eternal life, and that is the life of God.
देवु, वन फामा।
One, one, oh.
नित्ते जियोमुनु, नित्ते जियोमानिकी, ओक्या रोबुनुन्ने, अदे देवुलु रोबु।
Amen. So he has paid the biggest price to deliver you and me, my precious brothers and sisters.
देवुडु, निन्नु नान्ने विडिपिच्चितारु, चाल गोप्पा बुगुनारु, चाल गोप्पा बरुच चलिच्छाडु।
That is why Paul is admonishing us, he is warning us in Galatians five, verse one.
अन्तिके, अपोस्ट्रेन बोल्गालु, नीकु नाकु हेसरिका चास्तनाडु।
Stand fast, it means stand strong.
अन्तिके, द्रोणान्ने नेलापड़मान्ने नाडु।
There with, in the liberty where with, God, Christ has made us free.
मनकी स्वातंत्रु उन्नु, आ, स्वातंत्रानिचिन्नु, प्रभु एर्यामु एसु कृष्टु मनेका स्वातंत्रिंच्छाडु, नाकोस्तमु बेटिरु नेलापड़मान्ने जप्तन।
And be not entangled again.
मल्ला, मीलु, आ, पापुमने काडिकिन्दा, गल्ला वधु जप्तन।
We know something is very wrong, very bad, filthy, ugly.
मनकी तेलसु, अदे चाल चंडालुमाइन्ने, नीचमाइन्ने, दरदमाइन्ने।
I was a horrible, terrible sinner up to my twenty-second year of age.
नेलु वोला, भयिकारमा नान्ने ट्वेंटी, आ, पापिड़ि, आइपुर्वर्गी येरवेल्ल्यान्ड समचराल वैस्वच्छाद्वर्गी नेलु, गौरन्या पापिड़ि, भयिकारमा निवित्ति।
With God as my judge, I am honestly telling you.
इत्तकर्ते, देवुली मंदिरलु उन्ना, काबट्टी, नी विजयाइको उपकोट्नान, जप्तन।
How much a young man can get, can fall into sin and get corrupted, I went to the maximum extent.
नेलु, ओके, यप्पनास्तु, यंतो गौरन्या उन्नालु, यंतो पापिका जीविस्सालु, यंतो चंडालुमा जीविस्सालु, अत्यंचंडालुमा निजिच्छाडु।
I was an orphan, no one to have control over me.
नेलु।
Awf, I lost my father and mother.
ओ, आफन, आफन। नेलु गानागिन्ने, नाचिन्न वैस्वच्छुलु, नातल्लीन अन्ते बाडिन्छाडु।
I was not obedient to my elder brothers.
नेलु, नाप्यत्ता अन्नेले की, नेलु यंतमात्र विदेयत चोपले।
So the devil had a free hand in my life.
नाजीवितमुलु, देयमा निन्ने स्वेच्चिरो जाहरिस्तुन्ने, बाड़की एन्ना आवान्का नाजेस्कोडु, नानु, नादो वान।
But one day, God crossed my path through my pastor, Ravindra Raj, who was going to be with the Lord last year, one year long.
ओकरोजु, पास्टर रविंद्र राज़, रविंद्र राज़, रविंद्र राजनायन, द्वारा देवुलु नाकु स्वातंत्र पर्दिच्छाडु, आयन नातु पुएसंत्रु मरिच्छाडु।
Dev, God crossed my path and he spoke to me.
देवुडु, नायत्तकु वच्चि, नातो मान्कारे।
I made a complaint about turn.
नेलु, पूर्तिका देवुलु तिरिगन।
I was going down a path of destruction, of death.
नेलु, मरणानिकी सनीपम्गरेको गातुनाम।
The Lord made me turn around and now he is leading me to the path of eternal life.
देवुडु वच्चि, नान्नो, आयन, नामार्गो नाटुकोरि नन्ने एन्ने चैरु, नित्ते जियोमु वाइफ, बेला मार्ग वाइफ निन्ने दीस्केलेका। But when you make a decision for God, नेलु, नी वर्गा देवुली बोस्तम वक्त नन्नाइ दीस्कुन्ते, life is not easy, जीवित मन अंत तेलिकादु।
The devil will not let you go just like that.
देयमा निन्ना, इकोने निरानु वाले, निन्ने नेल विडिच्पट्टा देयम।
So long you were under his control.
जीवित मोत्तुनु, वाली स्वाद, वाली किन्दा उन्तावु।
He had all rights over you, over your thoughts, your decisions, your actions, everything he had control.
नीकु, अपवादी एका बंधकालु उन्ताव, एन्नी निन्ने आलोचिन्नु वार, नीएक माइनु द्वार, नी चेस्या परुलु वार, प्रतिदिवर्णु यवाकिन्ना उन्ताव, साथानिकिन्ना कंट्रोल उन्ताव, इत्तकर्ते, देवुली नमुकुनाव काबट्टी।
So now you say, God has set me free, devil, I don't want you no more, you can say, but he will not say, I will let you go, no.
इब्रो, नु आया, साथाना, नेल एसु प्रभु नमुकुन, नान्ने के जेलिपो, नु नान्ने के रावधु, अनि नो जप्पच्छाने, वायन निकल रापन्ने उन्नडु, वाली विजिच्चस्तन उन्नडी।
In First Peter, chapter five, we read, he says, the devil is like a roaring lion. He is coming around to see who we can devour, devourment, bite and eat.
मधुत्ति पेतुरु आइलाव चैयमो जस्ते, पेतुरुका रेगास्ताडु। मी विरोधी एन्ना अपवादी, यवारनी गटिच्छिस्म, यवारनी, म्रिंगुद्रानी, गटिच्छिस्मुमुलु वाली, बेदुकुचु तिरुकुचुनारु।
Between, behind whom is the devil coming like a lion? Whom is he coming behind?
यवार यन्काल वास्ताडु, देयम।
Is he coming behind Roman Catholic?
वायनमा, रोमास, संगलायन काल्वास्ताड़ा?
Behind the Protestant?
Protestant यन्काल वास्ताड़ा?
Behind the Pentecostal?
नी योन पेतिकोस्त यन्काल वास्ताड़ा?
Or behind the Hindu?
Hindu मच्छे, लिंदीलाई यन्काल पर्ताड़ा?
Or behind the Muslim?
Muslim यन्काल पर्ताड़ा?
Buddhist? Buddhist?
Buddhist, बुत्ती, बुत्ती यन्काल पर्ताड़ा, देयम?
Jainism?
Jain यन्काल पर्ताड़ा?
No.
यम्पर यन्काल पट्टमाडु।
Who has accepted the Lord Jesus Christ as one true God?
यम्पराइके, प्रभु एर्यामु एसु कृष्टु निसन्ना रक्षकुरिन्ना अन्नीकरिके, वाली यन्काल मात्रम देयम पर्ताडु।
In whom that word seed has been planted.
यम्परिलो, देवुली एका वित्तरमु नाट्यपट्टिन्नु, वाली यन्काले वाली अपवादी पर्ताडु।
Those who are foredeemed to eternal life.
यम्पराइते, कुंदुनाये, नित्ते जियोमानिके, नेन्ना इत्तपट्टलु, वाली यन्काके पर्ताडु।
To see that he can devour them, he comes around like a roaring lion.
यम्पराइते, विडिपिच्चपट्टाडु, आपन चिन्दा, वाली सुत्री निदिरुपुत्तु उन्ताडु।
No, I said that I was living a very bad life, I definitely don't want to go back to that filthy life anymore.
नेलु, नाचिन्न जीवितमु, चाल चंडालुमा जीवितो, चाल पापा जीविकान्ने जीविच्छाडु, काली एनु मलाई, आ, जीविकान्ने गलदब्स्कोनि।
That is our desire.
अदि मन कोरिकार।
But it is not easy, the devil will not allow you.
अदि अंत तेलिकारु, इत्तकर्ते, साथानिके नान्ना तेलिका विडिच्पट्टा।
But we have to resist the devil.
मनमो, सैथान नियतिरिच्छाडु।
He says, resist the devil and he will flee from you.
पेतुरुका रेगास्तान्ते, देवुली, देवुलीको नोपनि गिडी, अपवादी नियतिरिची, अपुर्वाडिके एन्ना बाडिपोक्न।
There will be times when you will trip and you will fall, you will trip and fall. You will trip and fall
नु तोटीली पड़ी पावन कोर्पुन्ना दत्तो
But the prophet says, you will make mistakes
कावत योप्तरालो नु गैरिटिका तप्पी चास्ताम
Sometimes you will go out of the way and willfully you will do wrong
नीवो नीम आर्गान विडिची नी स्वयु चेत्तो अति तेरिसे तप्पी आस्ताम योप्तरालो
That doesn't mean that you are lost
आ दानिबटी दयजम निनो बुपयान नु कोदिर पट्टु
It means you are going to get collection
दानिक अंत वेनकाय निन्तन जीव सर्वितु कोवरन जारतो
We will fall, he says, the righteous shall fall seven times, seventy times. The righteous shall fall seven times. Even if he falls seven times, he will get up.
बाइबिल योप्तुनटे नीति मंतुरु येवु शान बन्दक अप्पर तिरिया सन बेबुरु
Why he will get up?
एन्डु कान्न लेगुस्तार इन्टे
Because he has taken a decision in his heart
अतो नु ताहु तेमलो अबन नेमे जिस्कुनालो
I will not be under your bondage
नेवी कनिक यन्नाडी बोला बन्दी निकानोनी
The Lord Jesus Christ has set me free
देवु नन्नो स्वातंत्र्य निका चेस्यारु देवु नन्नी वीरिपिच्चरानी
I will walk in the liberty where Christ has set me free
देव आयका स्वातंत्र्य नुरो आयका स्वेच्चरो नीनु प्रीगन अर्जुतो ओन्न तरनी
So Paul is admonishing us, don't get entangled again
पौलिकार अनि इकरा मरलावुन को सारी ऐसरिका जास्तनालो पापा मणि दास्यम केदा मेरी बेल्ला उत्तोरी
Because, इन्तु कंटे, if we get entangled knowingly
तेलिसी तेलिसी मानम पापा केदा चिकु पड़ीते पापु चेते
Hebrews chapter six
एप्रियल राष्ट्रपत्रिका आरोज आये मो
Verses four, five and six
अच्छा आये मो आयु आर
Ah, six, four, five, six. Chapter six, Hebrews chapter six, verses four, five and six.
फौरियल राष्ट्रपत्रिका आरोज आये मो अच्छे नालु आयु आर वोकसारी वेलिकी पपड़ी परलोक सम्मानमयना वरामुन उचिचुची परिषद आत्म पर भालीवारी देवनी दिदिबिया वाक्यमुन रामो युग सम्मानमयना शेख्तुल प्रभामुन अनुभविचिन्न तर्वाता तप्पी पैनो वालु तमा विष्णमलो देवनी कुमारुनी मरला सिलु वेइचु भाहाटंग आयन अवमार परुचुनालो गर्गा मारुमान सुपंदरात्तु अति वाणी मरला नोतन परुचुटा आसाध्यमो
If, six verse If you trip and fall
नीव तोप्पीली पड़ी पायन क्लाइते
God helps you
देवु निकस हाई चास्तार
He collects you
निन्न सर्वितु तारायन
He chastises you
निन्न पवित्र निका चास्तार
But if you willfully knowingly get entangled again
नीव नीव तेलिसी तेलिसी आप पापु मणि कारी केदा नु वेलिते
Then this, these verses are for you
ई वशनम नी कोसमे
It is impossible
अधि आसाध्यमो
If you once again get entangled with the world with the sin that you once lived with
नीव वधल्पेक्तिन गान नी मरलावु अदेलोकोलोकी अदेल आप प्रपच्चराकी तेलिसी तेलिसी वेलिते
It is impossible for those who were once enlightened. Before I was blind, now he opened my eyes to see the truth
वोकसारी वेलिकी पपड़ी परलोक सम्मानमयना वरामुन उचिचुची मरला अदेय पापु मणि कारी केदा वेलिते वाड़ी की शमापन गेदु वाड़ी सिक्षा निक्तु बाई
The devil was preaching all lies to me. He was teaching me all wrong doctrines, all wrong things. But Christ came and enlightened me. Opened my eyes of understanding to see the truth, to know and understand the truth.
गत्तुलो नाहु साईतानु चाला विष्णमु पाप सम्मानमयना विष्णमु लोक सम्मानमयना विष्णमु अन्नी नाहु बोधिची नाहु भूतिका पापुल उचिन्न प्रिक एसु कृष्ट वची आयका मरोवेल त्राय तेलिसी नाहु वेलिकीच्चर
So it is impossible for those who were once enlightened
वोकसारी वेलिकीच्चपड़ी मरला पापुल केते वाड़ी क्षमिच्चपड़ी तो आसाध्यमो
And have tasted of the heavenly gift
देवु एक परलोक सम्मानमयना वरामुन उचिचुची
What is the heavenly gift?
एक परलोक सम्मानमयना वरा लेंगी
John 3:16 is the heavenly gift
योहान मुर्पनहारे परलोक सम्मानमयना वरा
What is John 3:16?
येत यो एक मुर्पनहारी थी
Give me So God gave us only because we are the ones whose sufferings are believing or which shall not perish but have Everlasting life
देव देवु लोनमो यंतो प्रेगिचरो यब रहे तो आदेवु कुमारुनी अंदु विश्वास मिच्चरो वाड़ी कुमारुनी नवनालो देवु तना नित्य राजन निविरिच
Amen. If you have tasted of the heavenly gift and have made partakers of the Holy Ghost Mountakers
मीर कनिका परलोक सम्मानमयना वरामुन उचिचुची परिषद आत्म मीर भालीवागस्त एरन क्लाइते
And have tasted the good word of God
देवु एक मंच वाक्यानी मीर उचिचुचिन्न क्लाइते
And the powers of the world to come, the world to come
देवु पॉवर्स अफ
The world tasted of the powers of the worlds to come World, world
राबुतुन एक प्रपच्चर एका आयु रुचि 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 राबुतुन प्रपच्चर एका रुचि अति परलोक सम्मानमयना रुचि
We read in Hebrews chapter two that he was going to give us of that world. We are talking about that world now, he is going to give us of that world. But once we have been enlightened, we taste of the goodness of that world
मानमो ई लोकुलो उठनामो मानमो ए लोकुल जमाकार्तो आर रामो सम्मानमयना लोकानु जमाकार्तो आप परलोक सम्मानमयना वरालो उचिचुचिन्न क्लाइते दारु कुत्त माकार्तो
Let us read Ephesians chapter one
माने एपेसील राष्ट्रपत्रिका अवत आये जतुकुनाम
Ephesians chapter one, verse Verse three
Verse three मानम प्रभु एन एसु कृष्ट एका तन्रियक देवु सुदिप बढ़नु राता आयन तीस्त रान्नु परलोक विष्णमलो आत्म सम्मानमयना प्रति आशीर्वादम नाहु कलुग्रेंचर
Amen. Blessed be the God and Father of the Lord Jesus Christ, who hath blessed us. It is a confirmed thing, it is a sure thing, hath blessed us with all spiritual blessings in heavenly places in Christ
देवु बनुने आशीर्वादिच्चर अति एकान कंपाव एन्न निति एक एनांड आशीर्वादलो परलोक सम्मानमयना आशीर्वादलो
That is what we read here, who have made partakers of the Holy Ghost and have tasted the good word of God and the powers of the world to come
माने इप्परे चतुकुनामो मानमो
Hebrews, Hebrews chapter six
Six Chapter six
Yes, chapter six
Chapter six, verse
Verse five
देवनी दिमेव वाक्यमुन रामो युग सम्मानमयना शेख्तुल प्रभामुन अनुभविचिन्न तर्वाता तप्पी पैनो वालु तमा विष्णमलो देवु कुमारुनी मरला सिलु वेइचु भाहाटंग आयन अवमार परुचुनालो
So we have tasted the good word and the powers of the world to come
मानमो देवु एक मंच वाक्य उचिचुचिच्चमो मरला रामोच्चना पर आयका राज्यम कुरिची माने इदुचुस्तन
How have we tasted of the powers of the world to come?
मानम यला उचिचुस्तनम रामो येव राज्यम कुरिची राम देशम कुरिची
God has sent us a prophet in his last days
आदेवु ई चिवरिकान तना प्रवक्तालो माने वादिक पप्पियानालो
And he is the mouthpiece of God
आयन देवु एक नोट बोरगा वाड़ु वाड़ुनालो
And all the hidden mysteries in this Bible
बाइबिललो परिषद तकरणमलो उन्नाट्वात्ती प्रति एक मर्मानी देवु आयन द्वार मानक तेलिये जिस
God through him has revealed all this to us
देवु आयन द्वारा मानक अनेक मर्मानी माने बाइपरिचर
Now we know all the mysteries that were hidden, we know the revelation of it
मानकी बाइबिललो रासियुन्ना प्रति एक मर्मालो देवु मानक तेलिये जिस यब द्वारा प्रौत आयन प्रौत द्वारा
Those are the powers of the world to come
येव रहे तो रामो रामोच्चना प्रपच्चर कुरिची रामोच्चना राज्यम कुरिची रामो अधिकारी कुरिची
We have not received that world as yet
इप्पुर इप्पुर वाक्य मानम इका आयका राज्यम मानक स्वातंत्र्य चुको पैनपुडी
Because we are still in the flesh and blood
मानमो ई रक्तमु वामसु येका सेरिलमलो उन्नपुडी
But we have believed the word
मानमो देवु वाक्यानी नम्मचुनाम
We have accepted the word
मानम देवु वाक्य अंगितरिस्तन
And we obey the word
मानम देवु वाक्यानी विदेय गये मो
And now we are children of God waiting for the promise to be fulfilled
मानमो देवु एक पिगला बनिंदी आर रामोच्चना वांदनमु आर रामोच्चना देसे पोस्टमु एडुचुस्तन
And being such children of God
देव
If we should fall away We are now being the children of God if we should fall away the six verse Six verse, you just follow what I am saying
देवु एक पिगला बनिंदी मानम आर रामोच्चना आर राज्यम कुरिची आना देसे पोस्टो एडुचुस्ती मानमो पड़ी पावन मान जारतिरो ओन्न
It is saying it is impossible, it is impossible to renew them again
मरला वाड़ी इद आसाध्यम मरला वाड़ी तिरिगी कटटम तिरिगी माला मावु सिद्धि जिस्ता आउटम रेन्युल
If you get entangled with the old life, the sinful life from which you were delivered
मरला मीर आप पापु मणि दास्यम केदा ये पापु आनची मीर वच्चरो मरला आकड़ीके वेलिते आप पापा जीवित कनिक वेलिते मिम्मली विडिपिच्चच्चर आसाध्यमो योप्तर
It is impossible to renew them again unto repentance
मरला नी मिम्मली मावु नासु पंदरात्तुलो पच्चक्त पंदरात्तुलो चेक्तम आसाध्यमो
Because
इन्तु कंटे
They crucify to themselves the Son of God afresh and put him to an open shame
मरला वालु देवु एक कुमारुनी मरला भाई जिंगा सिलु वेस्तनालो एक मरला पापु जेसी देवु कुमारुनी एक एसु कृष्ट मरला वालु सिलु कप्पी दिस्तालो
And put him to an open shame
मरला आयन भाई जिंगा आयनी वेगताली वेस्तन
See, when we get entangled once again
मरला मानम आप पापु मणि दास्यम केदा वेलिन अपुरु
We are putting our Lord Jesus Christ to an open shame
मरला मानम एसु कृष्ट नी भाई यमुगा भाईरंगमुगा सिलु वेस्त अवमार परुचुन
So what am I supposed to do? What should I do? Pastor, what should I do?
एक पास्टर आलो नाहु एन्ड चिल्पन्नालो
Romans chapter six Romans chapter six, आरोज आये मो Verses
आरोज आये
Verses one to sixteen, but we may not read all the verses. We'll read verse one first. Chapter six, verse one
आरागानी एमनु क्रपा दिस्तरिंपा बन्ना नी पापु मणि इलिचिन्नुमा आट्लानारादु पापु विष्णम चरिपयन मानमो एक बेला दलाव दानिला जीविचिन्नु
Verse one and two
कृष्ट एसु रोनिकी बाप किस्सा पंदिर मनमंदरमो आयन मरणम रोनिकी बाप किस्सा पुदितमणि मीर एरगर कापटी तन्री महिमा बन्ना कृष्ट मुर्तलो रुंडी एलावु लेप पड़ेन अलागे मानमो नोतन जीवु पुंदिलवारमय नरुचुकुन्नाकु मानमो बाप किस्सा बन्ना मरणमलो बाल पुद्ध तकै आयन तो कोडा पातिपेट्टा पड़ती
Okay, verse six Oh, six
एक एमनु गा मानमिका पापु मणिकु दास्यम कापुन्नटकु पाप सिरिलमु निरत्तक मलिकु मान प्राचीन स्वभावु आयन तो कोडा सिलु वेइचु एरुदु
If we have truly been set free, delivered
मानमो निसंगा मानक पापा आनची सापा आनची विडिपिस्ट पट्टा माने नंगिन लाइते
My beloved brother and sister, this is not a gospel sermon, not a gospel sermon, okay? I know I am preaching to the pride of Christ
नाह प्रिय मनन पर ई सहोदरी सहोदर लागि देवी स्वाक्ता परिचले कालो नाहु तेलुस्तु नी युर्दो माकार्तनु देवु एक बोधु दो माकार्तनु नाहु तेलुस
I know you have been taught in the end time message by your pastor
नाहु तेलुस नी एक पास्टर कार्तो गा मीर अंतेकाल वर्तमानमलो भाग तेलुस नाहु तेलुस भाग एरियुनारे अंतेकाल वर्तमान
You just bear with me and then you will be strengthened in the world
ई माटिला मी वेनंदी दिन वाल्ला मीर भाग शेक्ति पुन्न
So what should I do? I should not get entangled. Paul is saying What shall we say then? Shall we continue in sin that grace may abound? The previous verse he says For grace to abound in me, should I continue in sin? Because rather than sin, then the grace of God abounded
पौलिकार एन्डु सर्विस्तन नान्ति एकड़ाएते पापु मणि अंकड़ा कुर्पा कुटु अति कुर्पा दिस्तरिंचा अन्नु बापु निच्यो नारा सर्विस्तन
God forbid, how shall we, how shall we, that our dead to sin live any longer than Second verse, only second
आट्लानारादु पापु विष्णम चरिपयन मानमो एक बेला दलाव दानिला जीविचिन्नु
Knowing not that so many of us as were baptized into Jesus Christ were baptized into his death
कृष्ट एसु रोनिकी बाप किस्सा पंदिर मनमंदरमो आयन मरणम रोनिकी बाप किस्सा पुदितमणि मीर एरगर
Therefore, we are buried within by baptism into death that light as Christ was raised up from the dead by the glory of the Father even so, we also should walk in newness of life
कापटी तन्री महिमा बन्ना कृष्ट मुर्तलो रुंडी एलावु लेप पड़ेन अलागे मानमो नोतन जीवु पुंदिलवारमय नरुचुकुन्नाकु मानम बाप किस्सा बन्ना मरणमलो बाल पुद्ध तकै आयन तो कोडा पातिपेट्टा पड़ती
In second verse, don't take the verse, you can say Second verse, five seventy, Paul is saying, if a man be in Christ, he is a new creature
रेंडा पालिंति आयत आज्जम येदा वच्चुनु यबड़े न कृष्ट रान्नु उन्नायन वाड़ी मोतु सुष्टि
Paul is saying new creature, but you know what our prophet said?
पौलिकार सर्विस्तन नालो मान मोतु सुष्टि आरु मीर तेलुस मान प्रौत एन्डु योप्तरालो
If a man be in Christ, he is a new creation
यबड़े ती कृष्ट रान्नु उन्ते वाड़ी एक नोतन सुष्टि योप्तर
You are created newly
मीर सोंत्रा मीर कोत्ता गा सुष्टिच्चपट्टाल
You are a new creation of God
मीर कोत्ता गा सुष्टिच्चपट्टा देवु सुष्टि एन्न
When you accepted that God's sacrifice on the cross
मीर कनिका एसु कृष्ट सिलु वालो नापोसम मरनीच्चालो नाहु रक्षपुरानी कनिका मीर अंगितरिच्चन क्लाइते
When you acknowledge the shit that of Christ on the cross
मीर कनिका गुटिच्चन क्लाइते देवु तना रक्तानी सिलु वालो नापोसम काट्चरानी
When you confess yourself as a sinner
नीव नी यंतक नी पापु नु ओपुकुन्न क्लाइते
And you commit yourself to God
नीनु देवु की समर्पिच्चुन्न क्लाइते
Then you become a new creation
अपुर नीव नोतन सुष्टि ओकाम
Not a new creature from cow become a horse, no
मीर कोत्ता सुष्टि कालो क्रिएचरान्ते बक्सित्र बक्सित्र मार
You are a new creation in Christ
मीर कृष्ट एसु नोतन सुष्टि
You are supposed to walk in the newness of life
मीर देवु एक नोतन स्वभावना की मार्तालो मीर
As God has created you a new creation, you are supposed to walk in the newness of that life
मीर देवु एक नोतन सुष्टि आइते मीर आयका नोतन जीवु नरुचु
Okay, we will continue, we go to verse twelve, thirteen and six, twelve and thirteen Same same chapter, verse twelve and thirteen, Romans chapter six Verses twelve and thirteen
कापटी सेरिला दुरासिलकु लोपन्नत्तुलो चापुनकु लोनायना नी सेरिला मंदु पापु येलन येकुडी मारियु नी अवयम बनुनु दुन्नीतिकी साधनमलोका पापु नका अप्पा किप्पा पड़ी आइते मुर्तलो रुंडी सजीवलालु पड़ी मिम्मली मीरे देवु की अप्पा किच्चु पड़ी नी अवयम नी की साधनमलोका देवु कप्पी दिच्चु
Verse sixteen, verse sixteen
लोपन्नत्तु देन की मिम्मली मीर दास्युगा अप्पा किच्चु कुन्नुरो अति चावु निमित्तमुगा पापु पुन्नके गानी नीति निमित्तमु विदेयत के गानी देवु की मीर लोपन्नत्तुरो दानिके दास्यु लुदरानी मीर एरगर
Amen. Now, we are subject to some power in this world
मानमो ए दो अधिकारी के लोपन्ना उठनाम
That's why Paul is saying, let not sin reign in your world, let it not have power or authority in your mortal body
अति के पौलिकार सर्विस्तन नालो ई मुर्तलो रुंडा मयना सेरिलमुकी एलांति अधिकारु लेन
That he should obey it in the last there of Verse twelve, read the verse twelve
अति के परनास वजन जिस्ना एटे कापटी सेरिला दुरासिलकु लोपन्नत्तुलो चापुनकु लोनायना नी सेरिला मंदु पापु येलन येकुडी
Neither is your members of God as instruments of unrighteousness and the sin
मारियु नी अवयम बनुनु दुन्नीति साधनमलोका पापु मणिकु अप्पा किप्पा पड़ी
But yield yourself unto God, yield
आइते मुर्तलो रुंडी सजीवलालु पड़ी मिम्मली मीरे देवु की अप्पा किच्चु पड़ी
Only if the tray will yield itself to the potter, the potter can make any vessel that he wants
मारियु कुमर येन आसाल जिगटम मानु जिस्कोई आम मति तोडी तनक कावसिन रोपनायन जिस्कुन्न आज कापर एसु प्रभु मानो जिगटम
If God should make you a vessel unto honor
ओका बेला देवु निनु गनवयन पात्रका चेस्को आरु उन्ते
You have to yield yourself
निन्न वाड़ी की समर्पिच्चोवाली आयन लोपनाली
You have to yield your members
नी एक सेरिलो ना प्रति अवयम आयन की समर्पिच्चोवाली
In college they have so many faculties Faculties
Faculties, दीदल चाला मंदी ए
Your college, उपपत्ति There are so many departments, so many faculties
दीदल चाला विपागारुनी
So we also have so many faculties in our body Our thinking, our sight, our hearing, our smelling, our tasting, our feeling, all our emotions
मानम सर्व एक डिकाले जो जिस्ना एटे मान अनेक विपागारुनी डिपार्टमेंट्स अंद अलागे मान सेरिलो बोला चान विपागारुनी वोकेट मास्तु दौर्त यानि वोकेट बिनतम गानी वोकेट नम्मतम चाला तकटकाल अबयो विपागारुनी एन्डु योप्तर
Our desires
मान कोरिकारु
These are all the human faculties
येन्नी कोडा मानमो नी एक विपागारुनी
Paul is saying, submit your faculties to God and to righteousness
पौलिकार एन्डु योप्तरनके नी एक सेरिला अवयम आलो देवु की समर्पिच्चुमन सर्विस्तन
Knowing not, sixteen to us, please follow me Knowing not that to whom ye yield yourselves servants to obey, servant means A servant
लोपन्नत्तु देन की मिम्मली मीर दास्युगा अप्पा किच्चु कुन्नुरो
His servants he are to whom he obey
अति चावु निमित्तमे पापु पुन्नके गानी नीति निमित्तमु विदेयत के गानी देन की मीर लोपन्नत्तुरो दानिकी दास्यु लुदरानी मीर एरगर
Knowing not that to whom ye yield yourselves servants obey, his servants he are to whom you Whoever you are obeying, whoever you are yielding your body to obey, you are his servant and he is your master
You will be a slave to God.
So now, Paul is giving us his advice. Romans chapter twelve, verse one and two.
Now, when you say this, you will be a slave to God.
One and two.
What do you think?
Amen. Amen. My beloved brothers, I told you this is not a gospel message. My dear brothers, I am so happy to see a lot of youth here.
What is it? God bless you all. Many Christians are here. You are all here.
And there are a lot of angels also.
Many Christians are here.
God bless you all.
You are all here.
Now, Paul is telling us.
When you serve God.
I disdisech you, brethren. What is disdisech? I am begging you.
You will be a slave to God.
Why should Paul beg you and me?
When you say this, you will be a slave to God.
What kicks him? What kicks Paul?
What does God do?
I disdisech you, brethren.
We will be a slave to God.
By the mercies of God.
You will be a slave to God.
That he present your bodies, present your bodies.
You will be a slave to God.
People are presenting their bodies to the devil in every form.
When you say this, you will be a slave to God.
See the present day fashions, the models.
Now, when you see this, you will be a slave to God.
Young boys, young girls, the way they are dressing.
Many children, they are wearing clothes.
The prophet tells us.
You think it is just for fun. You will be a slave to God.
You think it is just a fashion you are following.
You will be a slave to God.
You may think there is nothing in that, what is wrong?
You will be a slave to God.
But the prophet says, there is a spirit behind it.
You will be a slave to God.
My young little sisters.
My brothers.
If you dress like that old grandma, the whole world will say, "See, she is looking like a party, she is looking like a grandmother."
You will be a slave to God.
They will laugh at you, they will make fun of you.
You will be a slave to God.
But you don't know and they don't know.
You will be a slave to God.
When you dress like that old grandmother, that child of God.
You will be a slave to God.
The Holy Spirit is behind you.
You will be a slave to God.
He is leading you on the path of righteousness.
You will be a slave to God.
The world cannot see that.
You will be a slave to God.
You are preserving yourself and submitting your body as a holy and living sacrifice to God.
You will be a slave to God.
You are presenting your body as a living sacrifice.
You will be a slave to God.
When you dress the right way.
You will be a slave to God.
When you walk the right way.
You will be a slave to God.
When you live a holy life.
You will be a slave to God.
You are sacrificing yourself.
You will be a slave to God.
It is not easy to sacrifice.
You will be a slave to God.
You can take one goat and sacrifice.
You will be a slave to God.
You can take a pigeon and sacrifice. Pigeon, pigeon.
You will be a slave to God.
You can take anything else and sacrifice.
You will be a slave to God.
It is easy.
You will be a slave to God.
But when you have to sacrifice yourself.
You will be a slave to God.
That is very difficult.
You will be a slave to God.
But when you sacrifice yourself for God.
You will be a slave to God.
Then, it becomes acceptable unto God.
You will be a slave to God.
And that is your reasonable service.
You will be a slave to God.
That is your reasonable service.
You will be a slave to God.
To be acceptable unto him that sacrificed his life to deliver you from the bondage of sin.
You will be a slave to God.
Therefore.
In Galatians, Paul said, "Do not get entangled again." When you say this, you will be a slave to God.
Here, he is telling us in a different way.
Be not confirmed to this world.
Be not confirmed to this world.
You will be a slave to God.
Don't model yourself according to this world.
You will be a slave to God.
Don't have the heroes of this world and fashion yourself against them.
You will be a slave to God.
Be not confirmed to this world in any way.
You will be a slave to God.
But be transformed.
You will be a slave to God.
If you are confirmed.
You will be a slave to God.
You cannot and you will never be transformed.
You will be a slave to God.
So be transformed by the renewing of your mind.
You will be a slave to God.
You, we saw in Revelation, Romans six, "You are dead and you are walking in the newness of life."
You will be a slave to God.
Romans, Romans. So, by the renewing of your mind.
You will be a slave to God.
That he may prove.
You will be a slave to God.
What is that good and acceptable and perfect will of God? Read the verse. I am reading from Romans. Twelve, one, two.
You will be a slave to God. You will be a slave to God.
How will you prove what is that good and acceptable and perfect will of God? How will you prove?
You will be a slave to God.
When you are not confirmed to this world but you are walking in the newness of life.
You will be a slave to God.
Then the secret manifests itself.
You will be a slave to God.
By the renewing of your mind, you are transformed.
You will be a slave to God.
As we saw in Hebrews chapter two, we saw that, "We are talking about the world to come."
You will be a slave to God.
We are going to inherit that world.
You will be a slave to God.
We are going to receive all the goodness of that world.
You will be a slave to God.
But flesh and blood cannot enter into the kingdom of God.
You will be a slave to God.
So we have to be transformed.
You will be a slave to God.
This flesh and blood, this body has to be transformed.
You will be a slave to God.
How does it get transformed? By the renewing of the mind.
You will be a slave to God.
Transformation will not come suddenly on the outside, no.
You will be a slave to God.
The transformation begins on the inside and from the inside it comes to the outside.
You will be a slave to God.
We know the story of the life cycle of the butterfly.
You will be a slave to God.
The butterfly lays eggs on the underside of the leaf.
You will be a slave to God.
The eggs hatch out.
You will be a slave to God.
It becomes a caterpillar, a worm.
You will be a slave to God.
Caterpillar eats the leaves.
You will be a slave to God.
As it grows.
You will be a slave to God.
It cannot move.
You will be a slave to God.
Then it starts spinning a cocoon around itself.
You will be a slave to God.
After a number of days.
You will be a slave to God.
One day.
You will be a slave to God.
That cocoon breaks open from the inside.
You will be a slave to God.
And the most beautiful glorious butterfly comes out. So each one with a different color, different shape, different size.
You will be a slave to God.
That transformation did not take place on the outside, it took place on the inside of the cocoon.
You will be a slave to God.
We are in a cocoon now.
You will be a slave to God.
One day we will lay this cocoon.
You will be a slave to God.
But the butterfly breaks forth and flies away, it doesn't take the cocoon.
You will be a slave to God. You will be a slave to God.
So when we get that transformation.
You will be a slave to God.
We will shed this old body.
You will be a slave to God.
And we will get that body change.
You will be a slave to God.
And we will fly into that world, into the kingdom of God.
You will be a slave to God.
If we desire this.
You will be a slave to God.
If we really want this liberty.
You will be a slave to God.
If we really want this freedom.
You will be a slave to God.
We have to hate the devil.
You will be a slave to God.
We have to hate all his good things, all his gifts.
You will be a slave to God.
The prophet says.
You will be a slave to God.
If you receive a parcel in the courier.
You will be a slave to God.
Your name is written on the cover.
You will be a slave to God.
Your address is correct.
Your address is correct.
Your phone number is correct.
Your phone number is correct.
You open the parcel.
You will be a slave to God.
And the box is full of little snakes, serpents.
You will be a slave to God.
Will you accept it?
You will be a slave to God.
No. The prophet says, "What will you do? What should you do?"
You will be a slave to God.
Give it back to who brought it.
You will be a slave to God.
No, your name is written, my name is written, okay, fine.
You will be a slave to God.
Sir, this is your address, your phone number, yes, this is my address, my phone number, fine.
You will be a slave to God.
But I don't want this. Give it back to the sender, who has sent it, give it back.
You will be a slave to God.
When devil brings things into your life.
You will be a slave to God.
When he brings sickness.
You will be a slave to God.
When he brings hardships. Hardships, difficulties.
You will be a slave to God.
When he tempts you with your eyes and your ears.
You will be a slave to God.
When he draws you by the lusts of your flesh.
You will be a slave to God.
You tell it, say it, "I don't want your stuff." You take it back.
You will be a slave to God.
You take it back.
You will be a slave to God.
I have been delivered.
You will be a slave to God.
I have been redeemed.
You will be a slave to God.
I have been set free.
You will be a slave to God.
I am on my way to the kingdom of God.
You will be a slave to God.
I am a child of God.
You will be a slave to God.
I am the son of God.
You will be a slave to God.
I am the daughter of God.
You will be a slave to God.
He has no more authority over you.
You will be a slave to God.
He has no more power over you.
You will be a slave to God.
For children being flesh and blood.
You will be a slave to God.
He who has came with his light voice in flesh and blood to deliver us from the power of death and him that had the power.
You will be a slave to God.
You are no more, you are no more a slave unto the devil.
You will be a slave to God.
You are no more under the bondage of sin.
You will be a slave to God.
You are a child of God.
You will be a slave to God.
As many have believed on his name, he gave them power to become sons of God.
You will be a slave to God.
Where is that? Where is that? Where is that verse? John one twelve.
Let us read it, let us read it.
It is the establishment of our mind.
You will be a slave to God.
John one twelve. For as many have believed on his name, he gave them power to become sons of God. John one twelve or one four.
You will be a slave to God.
As many have received him, to them gave he power. Prophet says, "What is that power?"
Authority. You will be a slave to God.
To become sons of God.
You will be a slave to God.
When you come under the blood of the Lord Jesus Christ.
You will be a slave to God.
You have God's authority in you.
You will be a slave to God.
And what is authority?
You will be a slave to God.
The governor has power. The governor has power.
The governor has power.
Power.
You will be a slave to God.
A power has a duty. But the police constable, the down the line police constable, he has authority.
You will be a slave to God. The governor has a duty.
Now, this Andhra Pradesh governor, he is coming down this main road.
Suppose Andhra Pradesh governor, he will be a slave to God.
At one circle or water signal, you call it, policeman is there. I am doing this duty, traffic, controlling the traffic.
You will be a slave to God.
The governor is coming.
Governor will be a slave to God.
But for unavoidable reasons, unavoidable reasons, the police has to stop the governor.
You will be a slave to God.
When the policeman standing at a signal, now it is signal lights, but when I was a little boy, it was only human, the man standing and showing signals.
You will be a slave to God.
This means, traffic coming from the back, stop, from the back.
You will be a slave to God.
I was in police car. What you got? Like MCC and all that, they have a police patrol stamp, I was in that. This signal means, main road traffic coming, stop.
You will be a slave to God.
This is another main road, this is a traffic coming, this side, this way, stop.
You will be a slave to God.
To stop, coming from left, we have to show this hand, this main road stop, this main road stop, and this main road stop like this.
You will be a slave to God.
Now the governor is coming, but some old man, old lady is suddenly crossing the road, a disabled person crossing the road.
You will be a slave to God.
The policeman raises his hand.
You will be a slave to God.
Will the governor stop or will not stop?
You will be a slave to God.
He has to stop.
You will be a slave to God.
He has power, after going back to his office, he can give a letter to the superintendent of police, "Change this man from here." That power he has got.
You will be a slave to God.
But he has to obey this man's authority.
You will be a slave to God.
God has given you and me authority over what?
You will be a slave to God.
Over the devil?
Over the devil?
Over the devil?
Over the devil?
Over, above the flesh, our body?
You will be a slave to God.
Over the world?
You will be a slave to God.
So my dear brothers and sisters.
My dear brothers and sisters.
To them that believed on his name, he gave them power to become sons of God. Even to them that believed on his name.
You will be a slave to God.
So now, we are, we, people that have been delivered from Satan, sir, delivered from the bondage of sin, delivered from the authority of the devil.
You will be a slave to God.
Paul is again telling us.
When you serve God.
Ephesians chapter three.
You will be a slave to God.
Verse one to five.
You will be a slave to God.
One, two, five. One, two, three, chapter three. Ephesians, chapter three, verses one, two, three, four, five.
You will be a slave to God. 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 You will be a slave to God.
Now Paul is talking some very big lofty things. Very high matters he is talking.
You will be a slave to God.
He is talking about revelation unto the mystery.
You will be a slave to God.
The mystery of Christ, which in other ages was not made known unto the sons of men, as it is now revealed unto his holy apostles and prophets by the Spirit.
You will be a slave to God. You will be a slave to God.
Now how this is made known to Paul?
You will be a slave to God.
How did Paul get to receive these revelations?
You will be a slave to God.
What did Paul do to get these revelations?
You will be a slave to God.
Paul says in the first verse, the first verse.
You will be a slave to God.
For this cause I fall.
You will be a slave to God.
The prisoner of Jesus Christ.
You will be a slave to God.
The prisoner of Jesus Christ.
You will be a slave to God.
Now Paul has become a prisoner of Jesus Christ.
You will be a slave to God.
Before, he was a prisoner to the Jewish religion.
You will be a slave to God.
He was a prisoner to the ideology of the fantasies.
You will be a slave to God.
He was a prisoner to the ideology of the fantasies.
You will be a slave to God.
He was a prisoner to the pride that you of the tribe of Benjamin.
You will be a slave to God.
But Christ has set him free.
You will be a slave to God.
And now he has become a prisoner of Christ.
You will be a slave to God. My beloved brother and sister, you, you and I might have been prisoners to so many things in the world. Christ set you and me free. But we cannot stand in that position. When the Lord Jesus Christ saw on the earth, he told us a parable or story. There was a man in home, there was a devil. A devil was living in a man. Or there was a house that was inhabited by a devil. The devil left that house. And the owner of the house, he cleaned the house and he painted newly. Because very glamorous. Very attractive. But the house was locked. Now if you build a house, the purpose is that someone should live in the house. So this devil that left the house, when the, when the devil left the house, it was very dirty and dark and all sorts of things. After some days, it comes back. Since the house is all, all cleaned and all painted and looking very glamorous, it dipped inside the house, it looked into the house. There is no one living in the house. So what did he do? He went, he brought seven other worse devils. And entered into that house. You and I are that house. If God has cleaned you. If God has painted you brightly. You don't keep the house empty. You call him. Lord Jesus come into my heart. Fill my heart. Fill my life. Fill my thinking. Fill my eyes. Fill my ears. Fill my mouth. Fill my desires. Fill my emotions. Let everything be according to thy desire. Then when the devil comes, he will see everything bright. He will look inside. He will see the Lord Jesus Christ living in your heart. And he will go away. So here Paul is saying, I fall the prisoner of Jesus Christ. Even before prisoner to something else. You and I are prisoners to something else. To all the sins of the world. To all the lusts of the flesh. To all the devils. But Christ has set you free. Christ has let me free. Now, we have to become prisoners of Jesus Christ. Now the prophet, I am going to close with a quotation from the prophet. He says, in the day that we are living in now, and everything is so breaking up. So fragile and carried away, fragile like glass. Breaking and carried away. I think that this message would be a very appropriate thing. This message which I preach today, very appropriate, especially to Christians. When they are going through their deep waters, waters, deep waters, trials and temptations. Troubles and distress. Waters always means distress. So when Christians are going through their deep waters now, this is an appropriate message, necessary message. The Christian church is passing through the deepest water it has had for the last 2000 years. Because we are, we are coming to a spot where there is something presented to Christianity. We are coming to a spot where there is something presented, given to Christianity. Presented to Christianity. We are coming to a spot where there is something presented to Christianity. Something they have to make a decision on. And I think that the Christian church ought to have something that they know that they are tied to, tied to. Instead of just floating about like a leaf upon the water or in the wind. We are coming to a spot where something is presented to Christianity, to the Christian world. Something, that something is, that they may make a decision and know that they are tied to something, they are tied to something, take a rope and tie to this pillar. And not just floating like a leaf on the water or like a paper carried away in the wind. And not just floating like a leaf on the water or like a paper carried away in the wind. As in first chapter, Timothy says, do not be carried away by every wind of doctrine, every wind of doctrine. The winds come and blow this little leaf away. Then another wind comes, north wind, south wind, east wind, west wind, whichever wind is blowing, it will carry the leaf away. That leaf will never go anywhere, it will never get established. Christian life should not be like that, carried away by every wind of doctrine. It should be established, stable life. It should be something that a principle that you are tied to and that is more than life itself. More than your life. That something that you can take a decision, decision upon. And you must have something that you are tied to, you must have something that you are tied to. If you have, if you have a cow in your house, the cow goes out for grazing, and evening it comes back. But in the night, for the cow not to get up and go by itself, you, you hit a, a, a rod or a, or stick into the ground and you tie a rope to the neck of the cow and tie it to this rod. If you are a Christian, you should not be carried away by any wind of doctrine. You should have a principle to which you are tied. Now the prophet is telling us. Our end time prophet William Brennan is saying, Some are tied to their business. They are good Christians. They are good people. They have been delivered. They have been set free. But, they are tied to their business. Some people are tied to their families. My father, my mother, my brother, my sister, my children, my ancestors, tied to their family. Some are tied to a creed. Creed, creed, church is creed, church creed. What was it for creed, brother, I think you understand better. Okay. Can you convert a Roman Catholic? I was Roman Catholic. But the Lord brought me out. Many of you would have come out from Roman Catholic, from Protestant, from Mendeigauzal, from Hindu also. Before we were tied to those dogmas, to those creeds. Christ cut that rope that we were tied, cut that rope and set us free. But now you have to be tied again to something. To something that is stable. To something that will not move. To something that will not perish. Because all these things will move, will perish. Because he said the whole world will, the whole world will follow me. Will fail. But my words will not fail. Amen. So he says, but I think as a Christian, I think as a Christian, I think as a Christian, we ought to be tied where we know it is right. You might be tied to your family. Your wife could leave you. Your husband could leave you. So that is not sure. You might be tied to the army. You can get killed. One military soldier in Madurai, Tamil Nadu Madurai, he died. So he was tied to the, the creeds, the dogma, the principles of the army. But he died. You might be tied to any different things. But it's not an end. Whatever you're tied to has an end. But there has to go to be a final type post. A final type post. There has got to be somewhere that man has got to die for his eternal destination. if you are going to trust in your work, when your work is finished, it's done. Anything permanent? Any permanent job? When, now, nowadays, the word permanent is not used in organizations. But when I was a young man, I started my career. They will take you as a company apprentice. Then they will give you a probation period. After probation period, they will say you are permanent employee. Are you permanently in that company till the day you die? So there is a period, there is an end. A retirement. So nothing is permanent. So when your, your work is finished, it's done. When your family is taken, it's over. But there is only one thing, I think is the final type post. I believe that Paul had a type post in his life here. He said, he said, for me to live is Christ. But that was false, that, that was Christ was false absolute. That was the end of all arguments. Christ was his type post. That is why he said in Ephesians chapter 3, he says, Paul, the prisoner of Jesus Christ. My words will not fail. Paul was tied to the word, to Christ. That was the end of all arguments. Christ was his type post. That is why he said in Ephesians chapter 3, he says, Paul, the prisoner of Jesus Christ. My beloved brothers and sisters.
My beloved brothers and sisters.
Na, priyana, sohodan, sohodan, laga?
I have, I have shown you a very big picture.
Nee, picture, katta, chetran, patchata, kisukavu?
I have elaborated so much.
Nee, puthiga, vebalichan, nee, visal?
Only to bring you to this poor point.
Nee, entu, kante, eye, visyal, tere, kose, nee, visal, vebalichan?
Do you have a type post to which you are tied to your eternal destination?
Nee, yala, me, kari, unna, ala, mimbuli, dariki, kattupadi, me, kari, unna, a, ala, kattupadi, vali, nee, karka, kattalu? Nee, viti, jemali, nee, kisukavu, type post, kari? Ame, kari, mimbuli?
If you are not tied to Christ, the stable type post.
Nee, karka, krish, eyes, mimbuli, kattupavu?
You will be carried away with every wind.
Nee, gaye, kastaavu, prati, eye, kari, kudukavu?
You will not get established anywhere.
Nee, yala, stenayana, unda?
Now a thought is coming to my mind.
Na, eppu, a, manusala, vustundi?
There are good brothers and sisters believers.
Manu, ikka, na, namakamani, sohodani, sohodalu, devu, namkunavali, unna?
They will find some fault in the church.
Valu, eye, sangam, chinnu, lo, kalkunavu?
They will find some fault with the pastor.
A, valu, lo, pastor, chinnu, lo, kalkunavu?
Some brothers, some sisters, they will not agree on certain things.
Manu, sohodani, kari, sohodani, kudukavu?
No, I'm not happy here, I will go to some other church.
Na, vichu, vena, na, santoshu, unna, manusputi, unna, venu, venu, venu?
They see you on the road, they see you and meet you on the road.
Veku, vela, valu, kisi, road, kudukavu?
They may say, "Praise the Lord."
Valu, nee, jappu, praise the Lord?
They may say, "Vande, vande."
Vande, jappu?
Or they will turn their face.
Nee, jodu, valu, karkavu?
But do you think they will get established where they go?
Nee, jappu, valu, velira, sohodani, kari, stenayana, nee, jappu?
No.
Nee, jappu?
They will keep floating.
Valu, yala, unna, eyet, gaalvastu, kudukavu?
So, so as an elder brother in Christ.
Neenu, nee, vettam, nee, Christ, krishlu?
As a minister of the world, the gospel of Jesus Christ.
Devani, seavu, kari, nee, kattupadi?
From my experience in the ministry.
Na, anubhavani, seavu, na, anubhavu, nee, kattupadi?
I advise you, brothers and sisters.
Na, priyana, sohodani, sohodali, nee, kisukavu?
If anything like that should come into your way in your life.
Eyereka?
Anything like that, some, I could pass to some problems, some problem.
Nee, kudukavu, chinnu, chinnu, lo, pala, eye, sohodani, kari, sohodani, pastor, kari, a, chinnu, chinnu, lo?
Go to the pastor, go to the brother, go to the sister, talk it, discuss it, finish it.
Valu, vela, kattupadi, vela, kattupadi, nee, lo, pala, na, lo, pala, andu, venu, venu?
And where God has placed you, where he has planted you.
Nee, devu, yala, na, kari, nee, devu, yala, ujya?
Be tied to the word of God, to Christ.
Akka, dariki, devu, vaake, kari, kudukavu?
Only then you will grow.
Appu, nee, kudukavu?
Only then you will give, you will bear more fruit.
Appu, nee, krishu, manchi, paral, balastavu?
So my beloved brothers and sisters.
Na, priyana, sohodani, sohodali?
If anyone.
Nee, yapa, esha?
You, God and Christ have set you free.
Mimbuli, devu, vimbochiste, vipiste?
Your house has been cleaned.
Nee, vettam, prade, super, unte?
But if the good man is not in the house.
A, sahivadi, devu, a, manchi, devu, nee, vettam, nivas, kiyekavu?
If you are not tied to the stable type post, Christ the word.
Nee, sariyena, nee, kari, kudukavu?
If you are tied to the things of the world.
Nee, karka, samvandam, visyal, kudukavu?
If you are tied to your job.
Nee, karka, kudukavu?
Always too busy, no time to attend prayer making, church meeting.
Yala, busy, kana, undavu, tiriglavu, antu, karesu, adivaram, prathal, koda, sangor, aarachal, kuda? A, aasar, kari, busy, kavu?
Sisters, very busy, I have to do this work, that work, wash the clothes, cooking, take care of the children, send children to school. I have to do, 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 no time to pray, no time to read the Bible.
Sohodani, a, chara, tiriglavu, unna, ilu, vandha, venu, venu, office, a, a, karesu, Bible, prathal, kari, prathal, kari, sohodani?
Who, who was the sixth church age messenger?
Aro, sanakala, dhoti, jappu?
Who was sixth church age messenger? Anyone tell me?
Nee, jappu, aro, sanakala, dhotu?
John Wesley.
John Wesley.
John Wesley and mother had sixteen children.
John Wesley, a, keli, pe, Susan, a, padharman, venu?
She had sixteen children.
Padharman, venu?
She had time to take care of her husband.
A, a, padharman, venu, unnapu, tanav, bhatta, patichkodan, samayu, unda?
She had time to take care of sixteen children.
A, padharman, venu, patichkodan, samayu, undu?
She had her own personal needs, she took care of that.
A, santavasara, dariki, patichkavali?
She did all the work in the house.
Mal, a, intrapan, a, jaskavali?
And she still had time to read the Bible to the children and teach them God's way.
A, anni, pallu, unnapu, Bible, samayu, prathal, jaskavu, samayu, Bible, venu, tanav, venu?
That is why God raised two children from that family.
Antu, kari, devu, a, santalan, ettar, venu?
John Wesley was the sixth church age messenger.
John Wesley, aro, sanakala, dhotu?
And his brother, I forgot his name, he was a gospel songwriter and singer.
Mal, a, tamalu, Charles Wesley?
Charles Wesley, thanks, God bless him.
Charles Wesley, kuda, ustaka, rasyavet, paat, rasyavet, devu?
He is, he is four months in the end time message and forty years in end time message, pastor, he is teaching me. God bless you. God bless you, hallelujah. So my beloved brothers and sisters. We should have a, we should have a steady, stable, sure, tight post.
Nee, na, priyana, sohodani, sohodali, nee, stenayana, kudukavu? A, me, krish, me, mimbuli, kattupavu?
And give our lives and be a prisoner to Christ.
Nee, kivita, devu, kichi, nee, krish, kaidi, valu, kaidi, devu?
When we are his prisoners.
Manu, a, kaidi, eye, kudu?
We have no rights of our own.
Manu, eye, vada, suntaka, jemali, kisukavu?
We have nothing of our own.
Manu, kattu, eye, unna?
But Romans eight twenty eight.
Roma, eyereka, vachay, eyereka?
It's close, Romans eight twenty eight.
Devani, premitu, a, a, sanak, kudukavu, venu? Vela, kalkavu, samaska, samakiri, jalukavu?
Amen?
Amen.
Amen?
Amen.
Hallelujah?
Hallelujah.
What did it say, Romans eight twenty eight? "You know that all things work together for good to them that love the Lord, who love God, to them who are called according to his purpose, who have surrendered their lives to him and have become prisoners of Christ." I have no rights, but he works all things for good.
Manu, eye, visyal, veda, swatundu? Manu, eye, kavu, a, nene?
I hope I have not taken too much of your time.
Nee, narukunna, nee, samayana, nee, vukisukavu?
But these are special meetings.
Edi, chara, pachay, venu?
Our country, India, is celebrating in so many ways.
Manu, desemu, ane, veda, iswata, dirot, jalukavu?
And today is a holiday.
Andu, ro, serav, daram, eye?
So I'm sure you don't have anything immediately after this meeting is over.
Nee, narukunna, eye, meeting, a, venu, anta, achet, kari, eye, unna?
So thank you for sitting patiently and hearing the word of God.
Nee, vandhanalu, jeevita, venu, sakar, kuchari, anta, oipika, vaake, ventan, venu?
Thank you for your cooperation.
Nee, veku, sahakani, venu?
May the preaching of the world be a blessing to you.
Devu, vaake, vodu, aasiru?
God bless you all.
Devu, aasiru? Amen.
Praise the Lord?
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah. Devu, kari, kavati? Amen.
Anshidi, vadi, yoga, independence day, swatundra, dirot, sundar, bhoga? Vadi, chakkadi, vattam, vandichar? Ah, Pasukal, Bhagwan, Prabhu, Shri, Srinam? Thank you, Pasukal, God bless you. Alagi, vadi, Thajwa, Cheska, Vati, Balishkar, Vati, vandhal? Vadi, anta, kavutna?
Amen.
Hallelujah?
Hallelujah.
Isan, yaapu?
Amen.
Anta, kavutna?
Amen.
Anta, kavutna? Eka? Torin, no, kavu? Devu, kisvatra?
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Devu, kari, kavati? Amen.
Isma, prilara, manu, bautika, samvandam, venu? Antu, manu, swatundra, kudukavu? Alaga, aatma, samvandam, venu? Manu, shari, samvandam, venu? Devu, manu, samarpinsavu? Appu, manu, swatundra, venu? Kudukavu, devu, kisvatra?
Amen.
Hallelujah. Devu, kari, kavati? Mal, devu, chetu, venu? Raatri, manu, veshi, devu, manu, vandhavu? Andu, venu, leach, venu? Andu, venu, leach, venu? Mal, raatri, chetu, venu? Devu, kisvatra?
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah. Me, venu, venu, venu? Andu, venu, venu? Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah.